I'll call the man in order. Thank you folks that in here tonight. We will, uh, take our heads and ask our county attorney to come to give the implication.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all of our many blessings in the, in the country we live in, in the state and the county that we are privileged and you have blessed us with. We pray that as we go through the business of this candidate night, that you will bless us and that you will help us make decisions and as commission make decisions that are favorable in your sight. The Heavenly Father, we also pray that you would help us as a nation, as a state and as a county to bind all of our wounds and, and stop the difficulties that we are having between individuals and between troops and to help take the hate out of all of us and install the love of your, of your Son Jesus Christ in us. We pray that for all our servicemen here and abroad, and we pray that everything that we do tonight will be favorable in your sight. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please stand and place the regents. Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First matter on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the work session on September 5th, the regular session on September 5th, the call work session for August 31st. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that they would all be approved.
Second?
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
I have one change, Nancy. On the work session, September 5th, under solid waste on the second page, we have considered having one of the three community centers open Tuesday Wednesday or Thursday. If we could clarify that, maybe that one day, one of the, one of those days.
Okay.
Okay.
And any other? All in favor of the minutes as corrected, please raise your hand. Citizens?
No, sir.
Old business we have brought up last time, GDOT suggestion that they would be looking at a roundabout for the intersection of State Road 219 and State Road 215, their goat rock road here. I believe that was since we wanted to go back and see what other options we might have.
There's my answer. There it is. Because I asked. Another question. Yeah. And this is in the district that I represent. I've heard from some citizens on this issue. And they are definitely in favor of doing this. Number one, it can slow the traffic down. There was also a citizen today, just today, who happened to follow somebody on 219, and the person got smaller and reached 80 miles an hour. So the guy in front of him was going 80 miles an hour down the road. But this is a dangerous intersection, and one of the ladies that I heard from, she said, um, you can't tell how fast the car's going north until it's too late. I've seen a high school student land on the ground after being hit there. And she said that was very, very upsetting. So please think about that. This is really serious. And my understanding is if we don't worry, that we get nothing. So.
Basically.
Yeah. And I've had several students, uh, students, excuse me, several of them, constituents over the last few years that have come to me, talked to me about this intersection. So I would like to ask that you also hear this one now.
The comments the DOT made, uh, just from you sitting out there was that the long-term options that they evaluated were a traffic signal and a roundabout. There's not enough volume currently to just about traffic signal, and it is doubtful that this will change in the near future. The county's support of the roundabout does not mean that GDOT will absolutely install a roundabout, but it gives us the opportunity to continue pursuing this and determining if it is a feasible project and a good candidate location. Without the county's support, GDOT will not proceed with a roundabout project.
And 219 and 315 are state highways. So I'm hopeful that they would know the best, the best thing to do to make this a less dangerous intersection.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion and we approve. Second?
Motion in the second. Discussion. I have seen several of these in operation, and they seem to, once people get used to them, they seem to operate pretty well.
Well, they should really slow the traffic down.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other old business? All right. New business? I'm gonna ask that the, we have several ladies who grace events with their presence. We get to do this once a year, and it's always a pleasure to do so. But I'm gonna ask the ladies from the local chapter, Harris County Chapter of American Business Women's Association, would you please come forward? Stand up here.
Well, I don't want to cover him up.
Oh, you cover him. I, I understand. I understand at the appropriate time. Okay. I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas the American Business Women's Association was founded in 1949 and is a national association of working women that has a strong tradition of promoting the advancement of women. And whereas business, economic, and social analyses indicate that the current trends of women entering the workforce and obtaining increasingly responsible positions will continue to contribute to the betterment of businesses and communities. And whereas the mission of the American Business Women's Association is to bring together businesswomen of diverse occupations and to provide opportunities for them to help themselves and others grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, networking, support, and national recognition. And whereas American Business Women's Association Day was initiated in 1982 as a national day on which Americans can recognize the achievements of the millions of employed women in the United States. And whereas joint congressional resolutions were passed in 1983 and 1986 designated September 22nd as National American Business Women's Day. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Friday, September the 22nd, 2017, as American Business Women's Day in Harris County. So proclaim this 19th day of September, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I have a motion.
Do we have a motion to approve in the second?
Come on, make it, get down, woman, this more picture. Come on.
Sorry.
All, anyone in discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Ladies, we are pleased to do this. We, once again, we cherish you as a vital part of SRA. It's not the last, the first, the last time that you are represented. But you do bring credit to Harris County. We thoroughly enjoy having you represent us, and you represent us very well. And I'm gonna ask John Holder, who is the current president of our local chapter, to make an announcement as to an honor that they are assuming will receive.
As part of the recognition that he mentioned in his statement, we, as a chapter, abide by some regulations every year far of the national office. And once we succeed in abiding by those regulations, they give us an award for best practices of chapter management. And we received it last year, and we've got it again this year. They'll be awarding that to our representatives who go to the national conference, which will be in Lancaster, Pennsylvania in October. So we're excited about that. And we've already started on our new chapter here, so we're gonna go for it again next year. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
You want us all over there closer?
Well, it isn't easy to move data.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it very, very much. You're welcome. All right. On the agenda were several appointments to be made, but several of those will not be done tonight due to technical difficulties, et cetera. But we do have the public approvals authority. Martha Chunin's term expired June the 30th of this year. She has consented to run again, to be appointed again, and this new term would expire June 30th of 2020. So I will entertain a motion regarding her appointment.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second it.
You will abstain.
Any, any other comments? Okay. All in, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries.
Well, I thought just, just in case. Didn't want to break a tie.
Okay. That's, that's the only one that we will handle tonight. The others will, soon as difficulties have been straightened out, we will put those on the board. We also, we also, it's great to be able to recognize some of the things they do and represent Harris County out and about. And we wanted to take this opportunity, and I'm gonna, if Thomas Vowle, Jennifer Quick, please cut forward and turn and face the audience.
All the way up?
Yeah, because I'm gonna ask you to grab the microphone. These, these two individuals, you know, in Harris County Journal covered this very, very well. But with all the damage that came about in Texas from Harvey slamming through there and horrendous floods that they had, I'm sure they must have felt like it was the start of the 40-day flood again. But these two individuals, Thomas Vowle and Jennifer Quick, came up with the idea and put it into action to, for Harris County, Georgia, to kind of help our Harris County, Texas, and other folks and Texas friends with doing, you know, getting some things together. They ended up sending six truckloads of donated goods from Harris County to, to there. And I'm gonna let, in a little bit, I'm gonna let Thomas, there were a couple of churches that were involved, and Jeff Makin also, I think did some things in his place. But let him just recognize all of the folks that were instrumental in helping with that. I know I had the pleasure of going by the community center, which was our pickup place here. And of course, it was raining here, and trucks, trucks and cars just kept pulling in, dropping off supplies, water by the pallet loads. I think just, just about the time I left, that we, because they were gonna pick up that afternoon, they were approaching a thousand pallets of bottled water alone. And then, of course, all the stuff for pets, for pet foods, diapers, you know, all of those kind of things that we could send. And so I want to read this resolution in appreciation for what you have done. And then, Thomas, if you would, just kind of mention some of the other organizations that helped with that. It was, it was truly a community effort, and they had done us proud. It's a resolution of recognition of Thomas Vowle and Jennifer Quick. Whereas the state of Texas experienced devastating damage from Hurricane Harvey during the latter part of August 2017. And whereas Thomas Vowle and Jennifer Quick, citizens of Harris County, Georgia, organized a relief effort to help the citizens. And whereas through their efforts and those of others, messages were sent out via radio, Facebook, and other electronic means, Harris County citizens responded by delivering items to the Harris County Community Center. And whereas in addition to donations collected in the Columbus-Wisconsin County area, there were enough donations of water, food, diapers, dog food, and other items from Harris County citizens to fill, it says three, what was it? Six?
Six.
Total of six. All from Harris County.
Uh, okay. Six total. Three, four from Harris County, and a couple from the last two.
All right. U-Hauls, 20 foot, 26-foot U-Haul trucks, which departed the Harris County Community Center on August 31st in Texas. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize Thomas Vowle and Jennifer Quick for their leadership in organizing the relief effort for the hurricane-affected areas in the state of Texas from Harris County, Georgia. And it resolves that this resolution of recognition be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, so resolved this 19th day of September, 2017. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion is approved in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The Thomas, if you can, will grab that microphone a bit, and then you can just mention some of the organizations that helped you here.
I wasn't expecting this, so this got done with soccer practice. Well, Jennifer and I started this the Monday before, and Friday morning, we had this all organized. But we did have a lot of help. It wasn't, it wasn't just her or not. It was our idea, but it was, we had a lot of effort, straightforward, handy. Believe it or not, they have a corporate office in Houston. So they stepped in and helped us out a whole lot with drivers and such. Jason Camash at PTAP in Columbus, which is an automotive superstore, opened up and let us use his facility for drop-off. Of course, John Magazoo and Ashley Marsden at the community center immediately agreed and said, hey, yes, you can use our place. And just the fine folks of Harris County and Columbus as well. This started at, I can't remember the date, so bear with me. But it started on a Monday night around 9:00 AM at my kitchen table. And by Thursday night, we had six 26-foot U-Haul trucks left. And all it took was, was just word of mouth and Facebook page and a little bit of help from some TV stations and radio, which we were definitely not prepared for. But that's all it took. And it makes us proud to be from here and live here amongst the great people. It was awesome. Who am I forgetting?
Was there a couple of churches up here?
No.
Not that one.
Now, there were some other places that, that did their own thing, but, no.
Well, we do appreciate you very, very much. Thank you for doing this and making us proud.
Thank you.
As soon as we all found the resolution, this should be together.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, sir.
Next is Water Works. Yes, not here. Jeff called me today, which I appreciate very much. He is requesting that we declare a surplus, a 2012 Case 580 backhoe. He said it's in the shop more than it's on the road to Elkendale. It goes to Case, and it's, it's just a bad one. And they miss weeks, and they have to rent equipment to put out there. So he wants to purchase a new Case 580 SN backhoe on state contract at a cost of $82,503. And while it was not included in the budget, I believe Jeff does, has indicated he has the funds in, in his, in his fund to handle this. So, we need, we need two motions, or you can combine it in one, to, number one, declare the 2012 Case 580 a surplus and authorize the sale via GovDeals or any other legal disposal method, and approve the purchase of a new Case 580 SN backhoe for a cost of $82,503 from state contract.
I'd like to make that as a, as a motion.
Got a motion in the second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries it down. Any other new business? Now move into the county managers portion. I'll call Mr. Vowle. First item is regarding the plant that is under construction and has more to go in the, I don't know, Mr. Harris, please. Mr. Vowle?
As chairman of the board, the board approved a project agreement with DASOL Materials, Georgia, through March of 2016. As part of that agreement, there's a relocation of about 500 feet upstream, so DASOL can construct an additional future facility on a piece of property. The county's Public Works Department was originally going to do the work, but it got larger in scope, and there's a need of specific heavy equipment that the county does not have or not have enough of at a timeframe for project completion. Therefore, the project engineer, Goodwin Mills Kaywood out of Montgomery, Alabama, is proposing to help us with this project, prepare a bid, do the construction documents, assist in bidding, help us select a bidder, and have a private company do the work. And basically, this is a large, a very large project. Not only relocating the stream, physically relocating the stream, so DASOL can build a new facility on that land, but it also requires a lot of federal and state and local permits. And with federal permits, it requires the purchase of mitigation credits. And part of the contract back in 2016, there was an edge grant to be awarded to DASOL, and that's in the works with the Department of Community Affairs, as well as a payment paid directly to DASOL in the amount of $200,000. All these costs are in this Flos 2014 budget of economic development. And basically, once the project's completed, the economic development portion of this Flos 2014 will be pretty much exhausted. So basically, staff recommends the board approve Goodwin Mills Kaywood proposal for a price of $19,900 and $2,000 contingency to do all the construction documents, the bidding assistance, acquiring all the permits, and unforeseen expenses, and approve this budget amendment that's going to be required. You can see their contract on the proposal in the package, and you can see the project cost of permit acquisitions. We were paid a little bit toward that. We have to purchase about $75,000 of mitigation credits, preparation of the construction plans and documents. That's the proposal from Kaywood for $19,900. Payment to DASOL, $200,000, and the actual construction cost is gonna be about quarter million. It's gonna take about eight weeks to do, and then the edge grant will be given directly to DASOL from the Community Affairs, and the county is the conduit. So staff recommends approval of this proposal and, and all these costs as contained in the budget amendment.
I'd like to make that in formal form, please.
Motion in the second?
I'll second. How much, how much of this will be coming from this Flos?
Hold on. Okay, now, okay, everything but the Department of the Community Affairs edge grant, that's coming directly from the state.
So that's the 579,000 figure?
That's the 150,000.
Well, 79,750.
It's coming from Flos.
Forever.
Okay, and that's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So there's, there's nothing coming out of the general fund?
No.
This, this is a stream that runs through the northwest Harris business park. And at some point in time, it was gonna have to be redirected, and we have chosen to, as opposed to creating a new, new stream, or as opposed to putting it all in a pipe, we are moving the stream bid. That's much cheaper than putting down a pipe and covering it and running it off through there. So it has to be done for the park.
Makes land usable, that was not, would not otherwise be usable, probably be in the flip.
And part of, part of DASOL's plant, they have, they're building it two phases. The first phase is they're putting machinery and equipment in right now with a fall opening of that plant. And then Phase Two will occur as soon as this is, this stream has been moved.
Will this affect any of the property other than what DASOL, for the, what they have?
Well, it goes down into a wetlands area, so it ends up in the same place. But no, it will not impact negatively any of the other.
I was thinking impacting positively, and you, will make any of the other property more usable?
Well, it makes this property usable, because their Phase Two is gonna be right where the stream is at. So, yeah. And this is gonna be two phases together. This is a $35 and $40 million capital investment and 110 employees. Okay. Any other discussion?
The board will see this again when the bids come in, so the board can award the
The construction.
The construction cost. And it's, again, it's estimated to be a quarter million. Hopefully comes to the less.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. And the next one is project updates.
Basically, to briefly brief the board on various projects. Number five, the county received six responses for our bid of software, the county software package, and county staff is reviewing those six responses. And there will be demonstrations the last week of September on the top four. So they have already been selected, and demonstrations will be in the last week of September, and then the board will see that bid award for consideration early October. Number seven, the camera system at the prison. Again, the board awarded that, and that has begun to design the computer, uh, the camera system at the prison to replace that old system. Number eight, the board heard last meeting about the radio system. Again, initial contact has been made with horsepower, and things are very, are going very smoothly. But again, it's just the beginning, but it's a really positive beginning. Number nine, the telephone system at Number One and the CAT system. The Number One folks are on site, and they're installing their equipment this week, and the CAT system is shortly thereafter. So work is progressing on Number Nine. The Number One telephone and CAT system. Number 13, the seven fire trucks and the two brush trucks in the northwest Harris building using Flos 14 funds. Just talked to some folks, and due to hurricanes in, in the, in the area where these trucks are being built, the October-December deadline has been pushed back to January, February 2018 to deliver most of these apparatuses. Number 15, 2016 L-Med of Lick Skillet. I believe they've begun Lick Skillet Road, and it's not finished yet, but they have begun. It's a very, it's almost a set of out project, a resurfacing project, but at least Robinson has begun. Number 16, the 2017 L-Med. Number sixteen, the 2017 L-Med, they have, another crew with Robinson has also begun the resurfacing of the other roads, and they start, this, I know they were in Madison Way this week, had a little hiccup, we're going to fix that. So Robinson is doing, they started, it should be finished by the end of the month, all the resurfacing. And then, number twenty, Hardage Road. The water lines are going in this week, and the Robinson paving should be back on full force after the, it got dried out with the hurricanes and all the rains we had last week. So Robinson paving should be back on Hardage this coming week. And, but this week, Water Works is putting in the water system. Number forty-one, bid out of Southern Lake Transportation disposal contract. Bids were received, I'm preparing a contract with, a proposed contract with a low bid. Hopefully, the board will see that on October the third. So that, number forty-one is in progress. Number forty-two, had a meeting today at the library, took a tour of it. All the sheet rock is up on the inside. It is taking a lot of shape. It's dried in, all the sheet rock is up. Interior painting will begin next week. It is taking shape. So the library is, again, on time and under budget, and, and a smooth sailing from here. And then Charter Spectrum, as part of that project, is next on the agenda, and that is near here tomorrow. They have a library with functioning internet. Number forty-nine, Flos continuation proposal. Again, the board heard from all five cities this evening about that. Again, that is a beginning, and will, will end up somewhere with an integral agreement. And number fifty, fifty, update all fee schedules. Again, the board has heard from most of those fee schedules, and at the next meeting on October the third will be the rest of the fee schedules for presentation, and then approval may be October the seventh. See, and you can see the losses, Flos collections, they didn't change from a previous year, of previous, and that's about it.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions? Anything else to talk? Okay. County Attorney John Taylor.
Yes, sir, there are two items. Item number ten is an amendment to the Southern Health Partners contract. The, this contract deals with providing health services to the Harris County Jail, not the prison. And the last year that you redid the agreement because it had been in place for a while, and after a while, it got very hard to, to figure out what amendment applied to what. So I've met, or sat on the phone quite a bit with, with Jonathan Hamilton, who is with Southern Health Partners, and we entered into a new contract of which they July 1, 16, of which you have a copy in front of you, and it's made things look a lot better. Now, this is the amendment, amendment number one of the contract, and of course, what it's doing is, the contract rolls over anyway, but this amendment provides that the contract will be adjusted up slightly with a base amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-two cents, or ninety-five hundred dollars a month, and, and the, there will be a slight adjustment of a dollar thirty-four per inmate for each inmate over, population over a hundred and ten. What the, what Southern Health Partners does is provide healthcare, staffing for forty hours a week with a nurse or early qualified medical personnel for the prisoners in the jail that are, that are out of, that have to be housed out there for, while they're pending trial or after trial if they are satisfied by the magistrate. The, if there is a, on weekends and, and when there is not somebody there, they will provide, somebody that will, will be able to provide the medical care, its license. So we have twenty, medical care twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for the prisoners that are in the jail. And this is a contract that's been going on for a while. And I understand that it's worked well, and the, I recommend that you approve the amendment contract for 2017 to 2018.
All right, thank you, sir. I entertain a motion. We have a second.
I'll say.
Discussion.
How often is this bid?
Well, it has not, you know, it hasn't been bid out, it's just been going on, you know, they, they, as far as I know, it hasn't been.
They changed in 2011 to this company?
So.
We don't know that unless they have, unless they're displeased with it. After this many years, it seems like it would be wise to see what else is out there.
Yeah.
Well, you know, what you can do is go ahead and approve the amendment, and then let Randy start, you know, kind of talking about and see what else is out there, and give some ideas of whether or not this is high or low, or if. But it's something that you've got to do, and it's just not everybody's going to be providing medical care twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to the.
Randy, do you know how, how many other companies there are in the state that do this?
There are other companies that do this. There's several of them.
I was trying to read the original contract that was approved beginning July 1, 2016, Article seven, and the way some of the figures are in it, it's kind of hard to tell, jumping from one to the other. It's got the figure of a hundred and two thousand later. It talks about one month later being a hundred and eleven thousand, you know, which pays up. I'm just not understanding your compensation, the base compensation, what's this on the end?
Base compensation, I think, is on annualized price, a hundred and fourteen, two twenty.
Right, but I was just looking back to see compared to what the contract was before the amendment.
Yeah, it had, it, it, this was part of the difficulty in the contract, where it was, it was up, the effect of July 1, 16, well, to seventeen, it was a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-six cents. But before that, it had been down around a hundred and two. And the numbers of amendments to it, and that's the reason we came back and just wrote one, have a new contract, and tried to update to this.
Okay, so it's where now?
It is, right.
And this contract will be through what date?
June 30 of next year.
So we've got a while, we've got a little while to think about whether or not we'll bid it out again. I do think after this many years, it would probably wise to bid it, just to see what to get.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please see if I read your hand. What's your agenda?
The last item that I had, the last item on the agenda is agreement with Charter Spectrum for internet service to the community center, as well as telephone service to the community center. I think there is a representative here, Mr. Sonny from Spectrum, that may wish to address you on some of the issues. While he's making his way up, this came before you some, several meetings ago, and there was, the numbers were fine, but the, the contract is kind of, kind of confusing, and I had gone through it, both, both, two, both contracts, the telephone and the internet. And the first one in your book is the fiber internet, and then the second one is the telephone service. And the attachments to them are basically the same. I just had some concerns about some of the, some of the things in there. I talked to Mr. Sonny on several occasions, and then he connected me, and we've done on the telephone with the attorney for Spectrum out of Charter, out of St. Louis, and spent a good while going over the contract, some things they put in there, some things they didn't want to put in there. And so I'll let him address what he needs to address, but it's, it's kind of one of those things that we're going to point out, if you want internet service out there, what they're saying they're going to do it for you. But you have, you've got some real bad issues with this, then we'll, you know, do without that service, I think, or something. And it's kind of like, you know, for that, you're going to have to pay the fiddle, Randy. This is it. But, and there's another thing I'll tell you about, and maybe you'll get through with me.
Sure, thank you so much, Peter, for having me here and representing the company. And me and Mr. Randy, we've been going back and forth on the proposal, and, you know, proposition what we came up was, we will be bringing fiber optic for the community center and the new library, and whatever the upfront cost of bringing fiber optic is, as a company, we are taking off it. It's roughly around more than fifty thousand dollars. My company will be putting upfront to bring the fiber optic into the, you know, your facilities. So it's like my company investing in, you know, Harris County, and we do that, we do the journey of the counties because of the fact that we do business in the county and want to make sure that, you know, the organizations which is running cities and counties have better services from our side. And, you know, our services are basically fiber optic, which right now compared to what you have is almost one thousand times faster, very, very fast, and it's fiber optic. Right now, what you have is copper, it's almost, you know, old age technology, which was invented by Mr. Randy Bell, and still, you know, like, people are using it. But with fiber optic, the biggest benefit what you have is right now, you're kind of at a stage where you're, the way you do transactions in your organization have changed drastically, you know, over a period of like ten to twelve years. And every day, you know, going forward, every year on year, your organization will need higher and higher speed. And with this fiber optic, the benefit will be that right now, the kind of bottleneck or, you know, the things what you're facing as kind of like bandwidth chockness, it'll not happen because fiber optic has an unlimited capacity currently. Fiber optic you'll be bringing will have a capacity of one thousand meg, which is thousand times faster than what you have currently. And even after four, five, or ten years, if you reach that limit, that fiber optic can support ten thousand meg, and even going on and on. So technically, fiber optic has unlimited capacity, it's the devices, what we install, defines the capacity. So your organization will have that super high-speed internet services and, you know, very reliable phone services going forward on fiber optic services, which will be very, very faster than what you have currently. And for that, you know, as I said, we, as a company, will be investing in your infrastructure because the investment what we'll be doing will be just for the library and the community center. It is not being, even, it's not like, you know, my fiber optic that I bring to you, I can serve the next door guy, it's not like that.
So it wouldn't be bad to citizens and all?
Citizens, I mean, they, they want it, and they can afford it, definitely, but I have to do, build out for each and every customer, and that will cost me money. We have fiber optic on this road, but like, if the courthouse wants the fiber optic, I have to send out the guys who's going to do the construction work of bringing the fiber optic to your telecom room, and that kind of, you know, costs us money. And we put that money upfront, we don't charge any penny to the county, we take care of that, you know, so it's like we investing in your organization to provide you services.
Just because of my lack of knowledge in this field, just would like to understand, on the very first page, where it's check, it says non-hospitality and non-video, what does that mean?
Non-hospitality means anything, you know, the hotel industry, the motels are called hospitality industry, or restaurants, you don't belong to that, you're the government. And we have a separate division where we take care of the government accounts separately because obviously every business needs are different, every organization needs are different. Like, I'm the dedicated executive for the government accounts for the state of Georgia, where even after the installation and once the services are installed, I will still be the point of contact for, you know, any of your, you know, designated point of contact for me, where if you have any issues, or if there was an issue which was not being taken care correctly, I will still be the person to get in touch with me, and overall, I'll be looking for your account in terms of billing issue, or, as I said, like, you had a down drive, you know, the hurricane happened and you want something to be prepared. Like, we did a very special program because of this hurricane, Irma, that was coming, where we, you know, kind of took initiative and pretty much designed disaster recovery kind of solution for, you know, customers, especially the government customers, to make sure that in case your services go down, that we have some kind of backup coming at your place, so that at least you have communication going on, where, you know, you can communicate with your citizens and, you know, kind of give them the information or whatever information you want to share with them, and that way, you know, we did that kind of stuff. So for every organization or every industry, the requirements are very different. For government, obviously, you know, it's very, very different because of the fact that you're a nonprofit, and we have a separate division that takes just for the government, and I'm the executive with that.
Thank you. From what I understood and misunderstood, if the power's out, then the internet and phones are going to be out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What does it mean on that, when it says non-video? What does that?
Non-video is, when you're, like, we are a cable company originally.
Okay.
So that's like something standard, we have to boot.
It's just that it's not including the cable?
Right, right, right.
On attachment F, it talks about spectrum posted voice, what does that mean?
That's the product which we will be launching shortly in this market, in the state of Georgia, where, you know, right now, to have your phone services, you need to have a phone system in the building, and you have a phone guy who takes care of the phone system. But going forward, we'll be rolling out services where you won't need that phone system. We will, you know, host the phone system in the cloud, and you can have normal phone services through it.
Okay, so that leads me to, the telephone, physical telephones then would need to be, that whole system different? So the county would need to invest in?
No, there is no dollar or money to be invested by county. Like, if some, like, right now, what I'm proposing, or what I'm, you know, I propose for private phone services, is compatible with your existing phone system. So there is no extra investment from your side. So my guys are going to come in, and they will remove the existing phone lines from circling, and they'll put in the fiber optic phone lines, and your existing phone system will work, and you'll, you'll be using the services. Down the line, you know, after a year, you feel like you need a new phone system, and, you know, to get a new phone system, easy, ten to fifteen thousand dollars, and on top of it, you have to get contract or maintaining it, you say, you know, we don't want that. I can come in and say, no problem, I'll keep the numbers and everything, saying I will host that whole interphone system in my cloud without any cost to you, and you can just throw away that phone system. And that can, and that can happen with the fiber optic, because it's going to happen through internet. And then I have the fiber optic in your place, I can do that.
With attachment G, and it's talking about various TV, enterprise TV, government TV, explain what that does for us.
The enterprise TV or the government TV are, where, like, facilities like this, or any government facilities where, you know, people put, you know, TVs into the break rooms or the visiting areas, or like, we have program, you know, for the schools, which is called, like, this is a, you know, a legal program called Cabling Classroom, where we have to give free cable, one cable.
If you would focus on our needs, I understand what you mean by the schools.
Sorry. But it's just a standard workbench, because we are not providing any video services here, so it's not applicable at all, actually.
Okay, well, that's why, why would this need to be in the contract if it's not, that's why.
Like, down the line, if you go and, you know, Mr. Randy says, me, here, you know, I need a cable services here, then I don't have to come back and do this whole thing again. It's just a standard, you know, language environment.
So it's just something, if we want, it's, it's a?
Yes. Yes.
Let me ask a question that ties into that one, because we have had discussions about having TVs in here with our agendas posted so that the citizens can see it, and, and we would begin using laptops or whatever to do. With this, is this where G might come into place if we put that kind of system in?
G might.
Attachment G.
Attachment G. Which is the one that this attorney was asking about, the multi-channel video service.
I mean, that, what you're offering, sir, like, you're putting on the agenda at all, that's something internally, you, you have to do, your IT guy can do it?
Okay.
That's not something cable companies do.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that was it, I just wanted to understand, there's so much more I don't understand, but I, I better feel, thank you so much.
I'll ask a little bit.
There was a question when I first came up, there were a number of them on here, and every one of them, when I sent it back up, I had, is this applicable to this contract? And then, so I kind of finally understood that, yeah, it, it's probably not applicable, but if it ever does become available, then you got to claim it or something. But, uh, the contract is, uh, I've had gone, like I said, uh, discussed, made, uh, quite a lengthy discussion, and I just sent the stuff up, uh, the, the questions I had up earlier on, uh, and there were some, some changes that were made, uh, and I'm satisfied with them, but there is a non-appropriation clause in here, which means if you don't appropriate the money, then of course the contract goes, and then also on section eighteen of nineteen twelve, there is a termination convenience clause, which is a bailout, in case you need to be terminated, but hopefully you're not, you get that part. Uh, this, these, these two contracts, uh, one is for, is for the internet, and one is for the telephone, this is for the community center only, I understand the library will be approving these contracts, uh, which will be basically the same, and only, it's only this, this board will do that, whatever time they feel like it's true.
You're waiting for us to go first.
Any other questions, Congress, gentlemen, and you, you through there?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you have a motion, accept this agreement?
I'll make a motion that we accept this agreement for internet and telephone service at the community center as outlined in this contract.
All right, give it a second.
Give a second.
Discussion. All in favor, please sit down, raise your hand. Any other questions, Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment, I saw it mentioned during my project updates. Um, with Hurricane Irma, I'd like to, uh, cut, tell public word about how good the department did during the hurricane, I'd like to namely specifically mention the 911 Center and its staff, EMS, Sheriff's Office, all the volunteer fire departments, public works, uh, they did a great job of organizing, did a lot of work, uh, on the weekend in the middle of rainstorms, um, without hesitation, without complaint. So I'd like to really give a shout out to all these entities, along with listening to donate a lot of food for all the volunteers, and all the workers to come in from the, from the rain, from the storm, eat a hot meal and leave very quickly, along with boxes of pizza, and along with Andy Cooper, who gave a lot of food, uh, to all of the workers during this storm. So, again, you have a great staff, and I, I just want a shout out to them on the good work they've done. And he did.
And from what I understand, um, solid waste had some hustling to do to be sure and protect county equipment.
The solid waste, the, the solid waste, I mean, people may forget them, people may take them for granted, but it is a big business, and Rodney Dukes went out there, went all the convenience sites, got all the trash out before the winds came, and spewed it everywhere. Before that could happen, he got everything, took the landfill station, called the Grange, they came and picked up everything that they could pick up, again, um, I can't say anything-
Their trucks were rolling first thing on Tuesday morning.
And Tuesday morning, we sent an email out, your, your girls will be picked up, and what is, some people say, hey, you know, I didn't know you were gonna pick it up, and you missed mine, Rodney says, hey, I'll come get it.
And he did.
And he did.
Please convey to all of them our appreciation for the job they did. It was real nice when, uh, the media would contact me and say, well, what's going on in Harris County, how are you faring? And, uh, of course, that I was getting from, from Randy and everyone, it was great to be able to tell them that we have been under control.
Through our text messages, through our code brand messages, and through just water mouth. I think the communication got through, you know, could we have done better? You bet. Could we have done a lot worse? Of course. So I think the system works, uh, staff meeting will be tomorrow, and we're gonna debrief on, on what could have been made better, what could have been made, uh, what could have gone worse, and how we can improve the next storm, that might, that might be coming soon, I think.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you. Randy, Randy was, he put a lot of time in too, plenty of kind of hours, in different places.
But it is so frustrating to be in 911, um, you know, for hours and then, and not receive one email or one text. I go, I go the door two or three feet, and then they all come in, because you can't get 911, you can't get email or text in the 911 Center, I don't know why, it's just, it's a bunker, I guess.
Is that gonna be different with the new equipment and all, is that what's interfering?
Yes, yes, yes it will. Uh, but, so, internet was out, uh, or sporadic in the 911 Center, but once you go outside, you, you get it, but you gotta stand in the rain to get it. Uh, and then at my home, internet was off and on, so it was really, but, you know, you get in the car and you drive somewhere and it works.
Sounds like you had power, something.
Most of it.
Most of it. All right, well, if there's no, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Wow.
Give us a second, all in favor, raise your hand.